Talking of easy discussions, I was just listening to the Assembly meeting just before I joined here and they were talking about the Captain Cook statute.
Oh.
About why are so many, yeah, why are so many things being named after someone who spent less than two weeks in the inlet?
Oh, yeah. I heard that was kind of in the hands of the Kludner tribe, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's kind of some weird thing if it wasn't, wasn't entirely in their hands, but the, um, the question was whether the Assembly should have part of this, should be involved at some level. That's what they're currently debating or they're requesting. Debating a resolution which would be a request.
It's, it's Parkland, isn't it?
Yeah, it is as Parks and Rec, yeah, that particular, that particular location. Yes, I think, do you know a Sika, one or the other was removing a statue of a, one of the early Russian governors because he was particularly harsh to the local population.
Oh, yeah, I heard there was a movement for the sewer statue too.
Hi there, it's Michelle. Um, I also have to be at fire training and saying stuff at the same time, so I'm going to mute myself and be off of this one for a minute, okay?
Okay, we got you first on the agenda so you can get done.
Do you want to lead this one, Jerry, or do you want me to do it?
I don't care. Want me to lead it?
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready? Just looking at who's here.
You got a quorum. James isn't here yet, we'll text him.
I was trying to beat Mike's view and have a live view, but it's too light in the background. Um, anyways, it's July 14th, 2020, GBOS Budget Work Session number one. Uh, due to COVID-19, we're having this meeting via Zoom. Could you scroll down so I can read the?
Yeah, there you go.
Thanks. Uh, the Board of Supervisors, as committees and subcommittees are subject to the Open Meetings Act, uh, we're calling this meeting to order. My name is Jerry Fox and I am a co-chair in Public Safety and Trails and Cemetery. And also on the line is Mike.
Mike Hedgeson, co-chair and land use supervisor.
Brianna Sullivan, CE.
Erin Boone, Fire Department Supervisor.
Okay, but I know Michelle's on here too. Um, Agenda revisions and approval, the GBOS Budget Work Session, July 14th Agenda Draft. So we start with public as a church, we have, we don't have to say that. Everybody knows we're having the budget meetings. A quarterly meeting is scheduled for July 27th at 4:00 PM via teleconference. The windy corner draft, environmental assessment and draft programmatic section F evaluation relating to proposed safety improvements is Thursday, July, I think that's going to be 31st at 5:00 PM via teleconference. Public review draft of local landmark registry ordinance is available to the public review and comment from July, June 15th through August 31st, 2020. Agenda. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written unless somebody has another, something to add.
Move.
Need a second?
Second.
On favor, we're going to say that's unanimous in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So, uh, budget overview, are you going to give us an overview, Kyle?
Yeah, so, um, it's very basic to begin with here, uh, and we'll get more detail as we get into these budget processes, but between all departments, we're just, uh, putting forward flat budgets this year. Um, and we're definitely seeking your guys' input over the next three work sessions as to changes either up and down that you feel is, is needed. Um, and you know, we definitely have our, our challenges with COVID and the impact that we're trying to lessen on the taxpayers, but at the same time also dealing with, uh, realities and probably the, probably the biggest struggle this year will be the fire department and, um, and in twofolds, one is just an operational, um, for the fireside, but then, uh, we're in contract negotiations this year and, um, a number has been put forward. So Michelle will get into those details, but basically that's where we're starting at, as we're starting ground for this year, flat budgets and, um, and then working through it and definitely seeking your input on things that you would like to, um, address if, if you have any, uh, going over these next three work sessions heading towards the final budget, um, down the road. That's it.
So, uh, first up is the fire and I don't know whether Michelle is ready or she'd like to go later.
Okay, I'll share her budget here.
Uh, okay, so.
Would it be possible to email it or is it?
We'll try and email it too.
Margaret could, it just might be easier to see.
Yeah, she'll email it from her desk.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so, so basically, uh, under the direction of Kyle for a flat budget, uh, hello, here's a flat budget. Um, so flat budget and then the additional costs like liability insurance went up 25%. Things like that are somewhat inflicted, reflected in this, the health insurance cost, uh, we don't have yet for this next year, but that's also wrapped in there. Um, and what I also added in there new for this year is I took a stab at looking at our proposed revenues that were coming in. As you remember, last year we had revenues coming in for the first time and we haven't yet appropriated those, but I did talk to Dave, um, in preparation for this meeting, Dave being the AFD's finance guy, and he said that those are now available for us to appropriate, which is good news. So there is $30,300 according to Dave that's sitting there ready for reimbursement. Now, that won't necessarily match up with these numbers that are below, uh, because I don't have firm numbers on, my belief is that Anchorage does not bill their out-of-area billing for fire, this for the, for 2019 yet, nor have they done false alarm billing. So false alarm billing would be when you go, there's a false alarm ordinance, if you go to a certain commercial establishment many, 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 many times, um, after a while, um, you get a bill. And then the out-of-area billing would be when we go to Bird or Indian, like we did the other night for a structure fire, um, getting reimbursed for those costs. So, uh, that would be what that is there, but they haven't, I billed those yet, so I don't have those final numbers. So that $30,000 number will go up a bit more. Also, what's not in here for revenues for 2019 was, uh, fire deployment reimbursement for labor for me, but I did add in the indirect. Now for this year, it's a super slow fire year, so you're not going to earn a lot of indirect money from me, but I do anticipate you'll probably earn, well, see, this is, this is a generous theory that if I go on a fire assignment, you will earn, if I go on two fire assignments, you'll earn $3,600 for the service area. Um, and then Afisa, that's just a rough estimate, I put in 8,000 as a placeholder and then I put in 2,000 as a placeholder for Whittier, but it all again, uh, is dependent on what big things happen out of the valley, uh, or in Afisa area or in Whittier, uh, for that. So, and then this false alarm billing, I anticipate that would only be around $500 to $2,000. Out-of-area billing, I also anticipate will only be a few, couple hundred dollars. So, anyway, uh, but that's new, right? Cause we didn't have revenues before, but now we do. Um, yeah.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, you know, in the contract negotiation, you proposed, uh, a number to the Anchorage, and I can't remember the number, I used to remember it, but it's
Yeah.
significant, significantly higher than what we're getting reimbursed for EMS.
Right.
Like three or four, four times more, three, over three times.
Correct.
And, um, how was that going?
So, um, here's what we proposed. We proposed to, we proposed funding for a full-time ALS ambulance, uh, staffed in the valley 24/7. And then as an ad alternate for 12 hours, 12 hours on statutory holidays and weekends, having a second staff BLS ambulance, because oftentimes we have both ambulances out, out, working, uh, and so that would be reflective of what we actually do. Uh, and then I also put in, uh, the, uh, we go on approximately 97 a year calls for extrication on the Seward Highway, not outs, not including Afisa or, or City of Whittier or anything like that, just plain highway calls. And so for those calls, um, that rescue went on, uh, we should be, we're getting funding for that. So that was around 131,000. So that all was transmitted a couple of weeks ago, uh, to, after the contract negotiation team approved it, um, to Battalion Chief Davidson. Chief Davidson told me today that AFD is not going to move on it. I kind of had, uh, some feelings about that, inklings that that was going to happen when I talked to Chief Hetrick a couple of weeks ago, because she said, well, that's a debt issue because of COVID. I said, well, that doesn't mean we won't have no money at the end of the year and how, what are we going to do? Uh, and so, um, so we are now entering the phase where AFD will not move forward the contract proposal to, uh, the municipal manager, so it will never go anywhere. So, uh, I would suggest now is the time that when you have the meeting with the board of super, with the municipal manager, you might mention that there will be no fire service or EMS service at the end of the year, and maybe that would not be a good idea for a couple of months.
So here's my thought. Um, you know, you know, we, we need to decide how we're going to approach this come two weeks from now, when we have the MOA meeting, but you know, we should state very clearly that, you know, we have to figure out some option. And if on EMS, we may not be able to, as an example, fund EMS on the highway and they will have to do it. Or, you know, we need to have some negotiation where we tell them that, you know, we've had a great relationship with the municipality, but you know, we've been working on this for three years. And we need to get a resolution and we need to get a date of when it's going to be resolved. And if they're going to say it's going to be resolved with the same number, then we have to sell them, tell them we're not going to provide service outside the service area. That's my thought. What do you think of that idea?
So, so personally me, as I, as much as I hate that idea, I think that's the only way it's going to get resolved, right? Um, so contract wise, um, the only people that can work outside of AFD in the municipality is Chugiak and Gerwood. So there's no way like a third-party guardian or life med or anybody could come in and take the ambulance part without a IAFF contract change. So, um, so if we decide, well, we've got enough money to do fire and EMS just in the Gerwood service area and those 97 calls that go to the highway, we're not going, um, then, um, then they have to decide how they're going to do that. Now, to me, the optics during a global pandemic of removing extrication services and medic services and making it a 45-minute, um, transport or 45-minute arrival time from a medic unit from Anchorage, uh, seems really bad, but, uh, maybe I'm too close to it and I don't see that, but to me, I would think that most people in, uh, the Anchorage service area or in the municipality Anchorage would want to have, I don't know, quicker than 45 minutes away, fire and extra EMS and fire and extrication services. But maybe they don't, I don't really know. So, you know.
I think the problem is the optics of threatening to withdraw services aren't very positive either.
Right, and I, and the optics of I can't be the one that says, we're here to save you, and then also be the one that says, we're not going, right? I mean, that can't be me. It, it has to be either the Board of Supervisors or the Fire Board or somebody else has to be the big bad person to say, we're not going.
Another point I think, uh, to consider is, um, you know, all of us throughout the municipality equally pay for EMS services and, uh, the majority of the service area is covered by ALS. And, um, to even reduce it to BLS level here, would, there's still not enough funding to take care of that. And Gerwood should, and the Turnigan Arm area should be on the same level as the rest of the municipality with an ALS provider. In order to get ALS level, the increased funding is absolutely needed. And so, um, at, at the very least, you can't give the level of service that is being served to the rest of the community with the funding that has been contracted down here. And so if anything, if you want to avoid getting into optics of that we're going to close down business because we can't provide enough, um, at the very least, it's, it's a level of service that's not being provided equally throughout the municipality, um, down here, and especially in the remoteness of, of the Turnigan Arm area, you need that ALS support to get people to the hospital alive. Uh, you know, BLS just probably will not cut it because you won't have people who are trained well enough to do it.
So, so then the other, the other thing is, um, you know, AFD is pushing back, I understand through Chief Davidson about their budget person wanted to see all of the backup documentation for stuff. Uh, this is a contract negotiation, so providing, hey, this is what we did last year, is not contract negotiation. That's, that's showing, you already, they already have what we did last year, they don't need to see that again. They're going to say, well, you get what you already, already had, which that's not, that's not the same as, yeah, but this is the service that we should have if we're on par with everybody else. It's a contract negotiation. No other place in the municipality do they say to a contractor, well, don't bid it for what it costs you to do the work, bid it less. Right? And you just have to suck up all those other costs.
I, you know, I, I agree with Mike that it's threatening somebody isn't the right way to go, but we need to do something. I mean, I mean, you proposed, what, 700, $800,000 is what your actual cost is? And, you know, we all know that, you know, they gave us 209,000 and if we got 500,000, we could live with that, right?
Right, well, I don't understand why the fire service area has to fund vehicle extrication outside of the fire service area. And why does the fire service area have to fund EMS outside of the fire service area?
There's the, it's the argument, which is a municipal-wide argument about the funding balance between EMS and fire service. And while in Dankridge Bowl, it really doesn't make much difference because they're the majority of the, um, of the property taxpayers in the municipality, it does make a difference for those of us in, you know, Chugiak and, uh, Turnigan Arm area, particularly Gerwood, it's not even Turnigan Arm, it's just Gerwood. So we, I mean, we, we started that, at least we opened up that discussion last year and, um, I think, uh, you know, Bill did say that now they kind of know the numbers don't balance, they shouldn't really be continuing with the model I had before. I think we just have to push on, I mean, that, not just, but that's one of the things we should push, uh, rebalancing between the two. That's going to mean our costs go up though. I mean, the cost to taxpayers here will go up because area-wide will be much higher.
So then the other thing about that is, you know, a couple of years ago, they were, before the administration changed, uh, receptive to switching the balance of tax funding between fire and EMS and fixing the inequity. Now they're not. So they're not going to, it's meant to me that they will not be changing the, the tax structure anytime soon.
The last time we had, that may be true, and they're telling you, the last time we had a discussion with Bill about that, he actually said they feel they were probably almost obligated to do it, but they might not do it yet. So I think they are obligated to do it and we should push on that side of it.
Yeah.
They know that the cost to, sorry.
It seemed like a matter of, um, some of the current administration anyway, not being aware of it until we brought it to their attention and when they really dug into, I mean, we told them for months and months, but when they really dug into it, that, you know, Bill expressed that, wow, this really is an issue that is hard to ignore. So I agree with Mike that I think pushing for a muni-wide change, um, to, to make the numbers right is the way to go about it and probably a little less, I guess, negative or, because it's like fixing the problem basically, instead of just saying, complaining from Gerwood about it.
It does mean in effect our tax will go up and the same, the same in Chugiak, probably.
Right, and I think there's some, there's some not, uh, desire to rock the boat in Chugiak for some reason, so. Anyway, uh, what, what is also very difficult is to see the large, large, large amount of money that's being spent at the EOC.
Yeah, of what we're going to do when we go there two weeks from now. I mean, they can just put us off again. I mean, we've been doing this for years and I don't know, you know, you know, Mike, you have any other solution?
Well, I'm not sure that's the right, I'm, I'm not sure the rebalancing is actually in our interests either. Uh, that's the unfortunate part of it. I mean, the right thing is, um, you know, the right thing is hope that a large amount of money comes from somewhere, somewhere magical and, uh, falls into our lap. But I think we, I think we can follow, we can follow a principled argument that the, you know, it's an extreme case in Gerwood, but it's true everywhere that we're rate, we're raising tax money, um, for the purposes of spending it on fire and we're not, we're spending it on an area-wide, area-wide service and that's simply, you know, against the charter.
And your thought would be that if we, if they actually did a true rebalancing where the actual cost of EMS came out of area-wide, we would pay an extraordinarily high area-wide.
Not extraordinarily high, but it would be a significant increase. I think the numbers were something like, um, we'd probably add about 0.5, 0.6 to our mill rate, that's what I recall.
But wouldn't we be able to cut that out of our fire budget?
Not all of it, no, some of it.
Keep it, keep in mind, you didn't pay any area-wide tax or your property taxes here, you actually got a rebate on the area.
Yeah, but the, the net effect of it would be an increase of about half a mil. That's what I remember.
Are you saying that's just going to be applied to Chugiak or is that going to be applied to area?
No, so what, so basically what I, what I recall is, um, the, we're paying something, uh, I think something like two and a half mil, I think is the, is the figure from, um, the figure in, uh, the bowl, something like that for fire services, maybe 2.7.
Correct.
Um, and, and area-wide is negative, but what would effectively happen is most of that 2.7 would shift into area-wide. So sorry, it's, it's about 1.3, not .3. It would go up by about 1.3 area-wide, something like that, in order to pay for fire service for the majority of EMS service from area-wide. And then the balance would be fire. So in the bowl, it will basically balance each other out. Area-wide would go up, fire would go down. Um, in Chugiak, area-wide would go up, fire would go down a little bit. Here, area-wide would go up, fire would go down a little bit. It wouldn't halve our, um, fire budget.
So, okay, I guess I'm understanding now that you're talking about them rebalancing the entire, the.
It has to be. Yeah, because it's an area, it's an area-wide service, it would have to be balanced everywhere.
So, in this case, you know, Gerwood Fire is a contractor and so as a contractor, we contract them to provide fire service for us, AFD provides, contracts them to give us EMS. So I guess this is, this is really, that, the whole balancing thing for AFD, I think is, is something that they need to internally figure out what they want to do, how that affects, but in the short term.
But if they did, it would sort, if they, if they did, it would sort out the funding for us.
What's that?
If they did rebalance it, it would deal with the funding for us because we would be paying a relatively small amount from Gerwood Valley and the majority of it from area-wide.
Well, I guess in the short term, I don't think they're going to do this rebalance. I think in, in the short term, it's going to be a focus on how do we, what is the payment that we're going to give to Gerwood Fire to do it? And, uh, and like you said, where are they going to find the money to make that happen, you know? And realistically, the one thing that you're going to hear from Bill, he's going to say, all the revenues for area-wide are down. Tourism, alcohol, all these taxes that come in.
I'm not sure about alcohol, but yeah.
Well, you know, the bars, nobody wants to go anymore, so.
My experience is lots of drinking at home going on.
Okay, so I think, you know, you're going to hear that. So, uh, at least from my point of view, it seems like you really should just focus on the negotiated rate to provide it, because if AFD gets to the point and says, you know, it's just cheaper for us to put a 24-hour man station down there and then spread that cost out over the whole service area, let's go that route and see if we get that through the voters. I don't think they want to do that, but that's, that's the only option left to do besides working out a, a negotiation here that, that seems right for the valley.
So I think the, the question was what do we do in two weeks? And I, the way I would approach it in two weeks is we go for it, is we address the bigger problem. Um, that's not our final discussion, but that's, that's a way of, that's a way of fixing the issue system-wide and.
But I don't think, I mean, I'm going to step in, I don't think they're going to do that, so.
That doesn't mean they, they're not going to do it, I agree with you. It doesn't mean they shouldn't do it, it doesn't mean it's not the right argument to start with, but I'm not talking, that, it wouldn't be our full strategy, that's the thing I think we should do first.
Well, and I think that we should follow Kyle's lead and just focus on, you know, we have a contract with them and that contract says we will provide a service for a certain amount and they're, they need to pay us that certain amount.
Who is the we in this case, when you say we will provide a service? We're, we're, we're the contract.
I mean, the Gerwood Fire Department EMS.
Which isn't us. I mean, we're, we're actually paying for the, we're paying for the contract, we're purchasing the contract. The, um, fire department is the vendor. So I mean, we have to be, you, I think some of the times when you say we, we mean then we're speaking as if we're the vendor and sometimes we're speaking as if we're the purchaser. So within the, within the GBOS thing, we are actually the purchaser, um, and we are talking about how we spend taxpayer money.
Right.
We can't, we can't sort of sit on the other side as well.
Now you're going to get back to, well, if, you know, if we had a, maybe a stronger functioning fire board, they would be the we.
Right.
And we have to kind of step up for them, I think.
Right, I think, I think we have, there's probably a disagreement there about what we actually represent. We're meant to represent the people who are paying for the service, not the people that are providing the service. And the fire board and the fire department represent the people who are providing the service or the contractor.
Well, I mean, that, that leads to another comment, which is, it would be really good if we could get one or two of the fire board to come to the meeting.
Yes.
Cause that's, they are the we.
Okay.
You know, and I mean, I'm thinking like Nick or Deb, you know, I know Deb's going off.
Larry, Larry.
Larry would be good. Yeah, Larry, the new, I assume, I didn't see the results of the vote, but I assume that they got on.
Larry and Paula.
Yeah, Larry is a good voice.
Might be good to have like one new and one old, um, or one existing member, not old. To come so that there is some background of, you know, history there.
Yeah, Larry and Nick would be my choice.
Yeah, they're the two, most thoughtful.
Well, I mean, here's some strategy that I, I think might work in the sense of, I think, one, you have to establish a timeline with administration to get this figured out. And two, maybe somebody from the Board of Supervisors, um, becomes a key point to work with administration on, on resolving this contract negotiation with Gerwood Fire. And then I think the other part, part is, as a board, and like Mike said, you're representing the taxpayers, you need to determine what level of service you want for the valley. And then with that, Gerwood Fire Department Incorporated, uh, needs to present a number, which they have to say, here's what it is for ALS. They could present a number for what it is for BLS. And then you guys determine what is comfortable for the service area to have. And, and with that, you know, you could take the point from the, as a negotiator from the taxpayer side to work with administration to work on a number that is fair, um, for the taxpayers and then also that the nonprofit can live with. But, you know, I think in the short term, um, that's where we are and, and that's what I recommend. So, I'll leave it at that.
Chief, any other thoughts?
Uh, no, that's it for me.
Um, you know, like, I'm just thinking, I mean, to me, we need to negotiate a higher number. I mean, we can't keep going with the same number, so anyways.
A higher number for what? A higher number for?
EMS.
EMS.
EMS, than the 209 that we get.
And extrication, and extrication on the highway.
And that is technically a fire service, the extrac, the rescue?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have, um, did you have numbers which estimate what the actual spend is in the different? And we have those numbers for potential, uh, you know, for what we're, what we're going to get back, but what's the actual cost of providing service on the highway?
I do, but again, it's a contract negotiation, so. I do, but again, it's a contract negotiation, so we're bidding, so we should be bidding for an ALS ambulance 24/7. If we go to, what do you do, what do you have? And then we're back to, well, we're gonna scrape together what we have and throw that on an ambulance, right?
My, my question was, if, if we, if you look at your costs over the past year, how much of that cost is effectively providing, um, service on the, you know, how much of it is providing rescue service on the highway? Versus services outside of the municipality versus services in.
I'm under, usually about 500 calls a year, around 97 for the average of the last three years is the number of calls that we went on, um, on the highway within the municipal boundary.
But they're big calls in terms of cost. I mean, they're presumably many hours and a bunch of work and.
Yeah, so, so I, so for, uh, for an extrication call, I'll call it three hours. That's just extrication. That's not necessarily normal, uh, because you could go to a call and probably be put back in service after like five minutes. You could go to a call, you could eat up eight hours of your day, right? So it's kind of, it's a, it's a moving target.
But you do have, Mike is asking not what we want for service, but you do have a cost for what we've provided in this last year for EMS and extrication.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was asking for.
Maybe not specifically for extrication, uh, cuz I would have to tease it out, but I guess we could go back and look at every run that was extrication and pull it that way, but I don't have it.
I just, no, we don't need that level of detail. I'm just trying to think in terms of a general sense of the cost distribution, how much of it is the service in the service area versus EMS, EMS outside the service area and fire services, right? Rescue services outside.
That's on that, that's on that, uh, presentation we did. Let me just pull it up. Oh, where is it? Let me see if I can, and I can apologize if you can hear Matt describing a EMS call we were on recently. Um. With a sex trafficking individual, um.
Wasn't, wasn't Prince Andrew, was it?
No, it was terrible though. Bad things happened in our service area that we.
I shouldn't be, I shouldn't, I wasn't meant to, I wasn't meaning to be light about it.
No, 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 but truly, bad things happen in our, the take home message of the weekend
Yes.
Is that bad things happen in the service area that we might never know about and, uh,
Yep.
Luckily, our people were at the right spot at the right time, as were other Girdwood residents. And, uh, if not, um, we might have been dealing with a homicide, so, uh, it was pretty bad. Um, okay, so, uh, if I wanna share my screen. Um, oh, look, share screen. Okay. Standby. All right, can you see that?
Not yet, but it might be coming up.
Host disabled, participant screen sharing.
You have to change host, I think. There we go.
You see it now?
You are the host, but I don't see it.
Not yet.
Uh, share screen. Only one participant can share at a time. Share screen. Oh, there we go.
Yes.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so this is, uh, the presentation we gave to AFD, you might recall. Um, there, we were showing the annual call volume in the service area outside of the service area. Can you see that? So, so things in, things in green in the service area, things in blue in the municipality area, other calls in Kenai Peninsula Borough. And then calls outside the fire service area. Uh, this was a breakdown of how the calls went, uh, by location, basically. So what we'd be, so mutual aid, north and south is what we'd be looking at. The other two are already captured with reimbursement as of last year. So we'd be looking at those. Yeah.
And these are, and these are a combination of fire act, things that would fall under the fire activity and things which would fall under the EMS activity.
Yes, but, um, in general, to generalize, most of these are car accidents. Right? And there might be maybe 13 water rescues scampering or in there. Like the weekend, we had a CPR at mile 93, um, by a poor gentleman that was driving home. Um, and so they might be sort of in there intermixed, but the majority of these are gonna be car accidents, um, which are a, a fire EMS thing.
Right, okay. So both fire and EMS?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then this, these numbers are a little low for, cuz this is when we last did it for 2019. We'll update that for the rest of the 2019 numbers. So we'll have that more complete. But anyway, that might be helpful, right?
Yeah.
So.
It paints, it paints a picture.
And then just to, just to remind you about the cost of things, there's a municipal code, there's what we provide, AFD provides. We provide that. We provide this. This is what, this is the different type of calls we go on and what we need to take to each call, basically. Here's a service level, level, so advanced life support. What it sort of costs a swag, what it costs for Girdwood to provide this annually versus what it costs AFD to provide it. And then that, and that's just straight labor. That's not all the other things that go along with it, like medications, drugs, and other things, liability insurance, all those other things. Um, our liability insurance, I, I think I mentioned, went up 20, um, almost 20 to 25% this year, so that was not a good thing. And, uh, and it's prob, it's because of COVID, I guess, and then AMLJIA, which is Anchorage Municipal League, who does all of the insurance for most of those places in Alaska. They're backing out of volunteer firefighting. They don't wanna insure those anymore. And then they also don't wanna insure a lot of the police departments anymore, um, because of world events. Uh, so, um, you're probably gonna see the premium costs on policing insurance also go up.
So, uh, I'll keep the meeting going here. So we're focusing on 2021 budget. Michelle, how are we doing on 2020 budget?
Uh, 2020 budget went off the rails, uh, with COVID. Uh, I am working like I did on Saturday with the budget manager for AFD to sort of put us back on balance again. They owe us a bunch of money for COVID. Um, they, they, we've been giving them monthly expenses. They looked at the, AFD looked at the expenses finally on Saturday, and said, no, we're not gonna give you half the money for this. Uh, so that's kind of where we are right now. But yeah, I, I will anticipate in the next week, I will know exactly how much money we'll be getting back, put into the budget for COVID. But we had to take our, our quarterly draw early, about a month early to cover, uh, shortfalls. So, um, so right now we're trending into, um, November, December will not be good months if we have no money. I was also told that they will not give us a, an advance of any other money because it's the end of the year, so we have to just live with what we have.
Michelle, I'm curious, did they, um, like, when the whole COVID thing started, did they talk about what kind of expenses would be, um,
Yes.
That they would reimburse?
Yes, yes, and we went through a lot of documentation on that because you might recall, I was acting as the division supervisor for the Girdwood Response Area. Um, there was lots of documentation that was put in, daily logs and everything. They're now taking the stance that we're not gonna pay you for any of that. They might pay for the extra overtime we put in, but none of the, uh, day to day, oh, you're spending six or eight hours of your day on COVID, we're not gonna pay you for that cuz you would already normally be there. So, um, so that was new. Um, there was a, there's been, I can tell you from the start, for the first month, it was a lot of confusion between the EOC and the departments on budgeting and how they were gonna pay for things. And they still haven't paid for everything. Um, but, um, yeah, then there, and it's been an interesting experience, so.
So you should know more in the next week on what kind of.
I should know more. I can tell you, uh, about two months ago, when I was super worried, I sent Chief Hetrick an email saying, I need to know if I need to be laying people off. I need to know if there's not gonna be money at the end of the year. I need to know what's, if we're gonna get reimbursed, all these things, cuz I was worried like two months ago. And the email I got back was like, nope, everything's gonna be funded. The municipality is receiving this money. Uh, no, you don't have to lay everybody off. Everything's gonna be okay. Which I have in writing. So, so then Saturday, I get the, well, no, we're not gonna, that, we're not gonna accept that as a charge or that as a charge, so. And part of this, I would say, would be the EOC, you know, it's un, it's uncharted territory for everybody. But at the same time, I do know how much, you know, some of the contractors are making hourly at the EOC and how much money is being spent on things. And so it's surprising to me or frustrating, at least from my position, that we're nickeling and diming everything here when I know that if I just went into town, people are getting this amount of money hourly and, you know, spending this other money on COVID stuff. So, which I understand is different, but I don't understand why it, when we have to do COVID stuff here, it's just considered part of your duties versus in town where they can hire all these contractors. That's my soapbox of frustration.
Well, thanks for, you know, keeping, keeping up and keeping pushing, keep pushing.
So, yeah, so, so I think that you guys could help and on, you know, on this meeting with the manager, just the frustration about how come if you're in town, it's COVID covered, if you're in here, it's not, right? So.
And, you know, there is a significant amount of money that municipality is getting for COVID.
Yes.
From the feds.
Yes.
I don't know what it is, but I know it's a significant amount.
So that might, well. That might be something we wanna add specifically to the agenda, but maybe we should wait to hear from Michelle. You said you'd get more information this week.
Yeah, it's, it's like, uh, the rules of the game have changed so many times. Sometimes they were changing from the EOC three or four times a day before. But I don't understand why we had to put in all that documentation if we're now not getting funded for it, right? So, um, so, uh, but yeah, by the, hopefully by the end of the week, I will know better what the gap is between time spent on COVID versus reimbursed COVID.
Okay, I think you've kind of given us a good update, Chief, and I think maybe we'll move forward. Is that okay with you?
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You wanna head back to host?
Oh, yeah. Oh, wait a minute. Uh, how do I do that? Can I?
I think you go to my window and there's three little dots on the right and you can click make host.
Oh. I don't have that.
Uh, then go over to the list. You may have the.
I have.
And you click on the more button and you can make me host there maybe.
I have mute my video, stop video, rename. If I just stop, will it go away? Will it come back to you speaker view? Oh, maybe that's, no.
No, there's, there should be.
Sorry.
There should be three, if, you know, three dots sometimes up there, it says make host or over in the more.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, how's that?
Yep, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, leaving, bye.
Bye.
Thanks, Chief. So I assume Kyle, you're gonna lead this part.
Yes, um. Let me find out where I am here. Okay, so the first one on our list here, the first one on the, um, share screen here is Parks and Recs. So I'll just start with that one, even though it's number three on the, on the agenda. Flat budget, um, maybe just a little bit of increase with, uh, staffing, uh, right now. You know, one thing, sorry, caveat, we're saying it's a flat budget is that, you know, I think we're gonna have a better idea as the year goes on. And I think our first quarter revisions will, will be more critical this year about changing things. As we kind of understand the, the landscape, uh, for the next year. And, you know, right now, we're working with two seasonal staff full time. They're actually, actually working 30 hours a week. Um, it, it was the schedule that worked best for them and they were the most talented, so we worked with them and, uh, their other commitments to get them on board. But probably as we move into, into season, they're gonna jump up to 40 hours a week each, um, as they finish their other commitments. And so, um, so far, it's been great when we've had one week, but we may add more of that going into next year and, um, less of the SCA interns, so. So we'll see how that goes and we'll, we'll give more of a report on that as we finish up with that experiment. Otherwise, in Parks and Rec, everything is the same across the board. There was a little bit of move around in different areas, uh, but for the most part, um, the total sums for each line item, um, is exactly the same, uh, going into it. In here, uh, you will see the requests for the nonprofit grants for this year. We still have that budget at 35,000. And so you'll see the different, uh, requests for 2021 and also the award amount that they got. It's the same, uh, uh, grantees who are requesting this year as last year, um, who won awards. So, uh, their requests are fairly similar to last year, um, in, in what we have there. And then, um, uh, you know, it's more of the, more details within our budget. Overall, the relative budget is for non-labor costs, um, has been the same for many years in the 320 to 350 range, or 300 range, 320 range, and, um, and so, uh, we just work within that balance. Uh, our labor costs have gone up, um, but we've seen good returns with that, uh, adding labor to our, to our, uh, staff. And then the IGCs, uh, you know, IGCs are just a moving target. And so this can give you an idea where the IGCs are for this year and, um, you know, some things have gone down there with like the costs that we pay for, um, SAP, it, it, that's not reflected in this budget, but it'll be in our roads budget and, uh, and things will on those lines, so. So what we're looking at is, uh, a slight increase this year of $6,000, um, for the, what we propose if we, if our staff return next year for a, a cost of living increase.
And that, and that's basically because the revenues are down.
Yes, and the other aspect of, yes, good point, you know, the revenues, I'm predicting revenues to be, you know, we had a prediction of 7,000 revenues this year. I'm happy if we get 1,000, uh, in revenues. We, we may get a little bit more. We had a huge start with the campground, but the campground has slowed down, um, and we've gotten it this summer and other places are open. So, so yeah, yeah, we don't have the rentals like we've had in the past. This room we're sitting in hasn't been rented since March, so, and, and the pavilions are being used that quarter of what they were last year. Any questions there with Parks and Rec? This is probably, oh, go ahead. This is probably the first you've seen it, so, um, take time to digest it and, and then, you know, you can bring us questions at the next meeting.
Yeah, and you'll send out an email with these numbers?
I think Margaret already has, but she, we, we will after this meeting.
This is in the pa, this is in the meeting packet.
It's in the meeting packet too.
I'm looking at the meeting packet and it's the same as the screen.
Yeah, and Kyle, I have one, it's kind of a random question, but they like porta potties, 8,000. Is that, um, that's something that changes year to year?
Well, you know, porta potties have. Well, you know, porta potties have stayed relatively flat. The business must be good. The profit margin must be great. So, um, we've been, you know, on, on some of our, I know one unit we've had, we've been paying 210 for like five years. So, but they do go up, you know, uh, occasionally, but for the most part we're within that budget.
Because this year you cannot really use public restrooms in most places anymore. But people need to go. They're still camping and going places and coming to Gerwood, but not as much.
Yes. Yeah. It, it doesn't, it doesn't, our bill doesn't reflect the, the usage amount. It's just the amount of units that we have sitting out there. We have our normal city amount of units out there and it is the only place with, uh, hand sanitizer within our parks.
And the maintenance is the same? Like they come pump them once a month or once a week or something?
Every Tuesday they have regular maintenance. And if we have one that's got to blow out, they'll come and respond to it as soon as they can.
Yeah. Cause hiking, the, the trail system, there's nowhere else, like the day lodge, I guess the hotel.
Hotel.
Yeah, in the woods.
I just want another question and that is, you know, 150 for the capital.
Yes.
And do you know what the capital is? How much is in there now?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I'll try to get all those together for the next meeting.
Yeah, just for the next meeting. Maybe we'll get all the capital numbers together so we can look at those.
Yes. Okay.
And, you know, I'm just thinking, Brianna, do you kind of understand? Like, you know, how this budget works? We got, we have to have our budget to the Muni by when Kyle, like September? And then after the first of the year, we can make a revision to that number sometime between January and March, something like that?
Typically we try to have them in by March.
Yeah.
And then the assembly.
Something changes.
The assembly will approve those revisions, uh, right after the election where the certifying of the new assembly members.
Okay. So if we disagree or need a different change between the assembly's approval, we have January through March to submit that.
Correct. We, at that point we have year end numbers in front of us and we have more realistic about our costs. And then, you know, at times things have changed and so we have a chance to make that change.
Yes, thank you. I know that there's three budget meetings, so I just didn't know, uh, what really transpires between.
I think we had to vote in the fourth meeting.
Yes. Put that fourth meeting as your regular meeting.
So you probably have discussions about seven times, including in the regular meeting, six or seven.
Correct.
And the timeline is based on, um, the reason for the timeline is basically so that property taxes can be calculated in time for the bills to go out, right?
Correct. Well, on two points, one is, is to establish a budget for the next operating year. And so the process that we do here gets us set to establish a budget and start with for next year. And then the, the first quarter revision is, is definitely on the calendar to meet the, when property taxes are set and, and tax bills are set out. And usually you'll get your tax bill in June or late May.
So, uh, just for Brianna's purpose, the, what we're doing is we, we're dealing with that with real numbers and the municipal, the budget is real numbers. And then there's a match between that and the assessments and what you, what you end up paying for in property taxes, accommodation assessments could, you could end up, we could end up spending more money, but if assessments go up by more, um, you actually end up with a lower tax bill. Oh, sorry. You'd end up with higher tax bill in that case. If the assessment goes down, then you may end up with a lower tax bill. It, there's a, not complex, but there's a, there's a balanced relationship between these things. So we don't actually know, when we set a number, we don't know exactly what the tax bill will be that you will receive. It depends on what changes in assessments and they do change year to year.
Yeah. So i- as you'll see down here at the bottom of this Parks and Rec budget, I give you a estimate based on 2020 assessments of properties, which gives you like this budget alone will call it, cost us point six eight mils. And, and Gerwood has a full, has a mill cap of six mils. So we take all these departments, we add them together. We can't exceed six mils for our operating budgets. We've been averaging around about 5.3. I think this year at 5.33 mils. So, so we have still about point seven or less of cap space in there. So. So that's, that's one thing very carefully as we do this, as to what we can afford.
And then the total property tax bill is a combination of the G V S A component, the area wide component, which can be negative and was negative this year, and the A S D component, which is the biggest. So we generally end up paying something like 60% if your tax goes to A S D and 40% goes to Gerwood, roughly.
Usually what we pay in services here, uh, dwarfs in size compared to what A S D.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, we'll have two more meetings, so.
You'll be an expert.
Yeah. Any other questions on Parks and Rec?
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is police. Uh, so our base rate on our contract is seven, 675. I didn't try to make a guess on what the first quarter C P I increase will be. And so to, to give some clear explanation on that, uh, our contract with Whittier, uh, the basis, uh, 675. And then each year it increases according to the consumer price index. And that consumer price index is usually established in the first quarter of the next year. And so at that point, I think we'll, we can discuss that with first quarter revisions. But for now, um, we're just going to roll the budget over flat as it is. And, and, um, and this will definitely be a discussion point in the first quarter revisions because we'll have to deal with the increase and, um, figure out how we're going to fund that, either through increasing taxes or reducing, you know, you can reduce, uh, one of the line items there to help with it, but we can have that discussion at that point. But basically it's a very small budget. You have the contract costs. You have the rental, the substation, which is across the street from Chair Five there in the A C S building. And then we have a miscellaneous fund, uh, which we use for towing cars. Sometimes we've, in years past, we've had to deal with a shop fair by, uh, by Whittier Police. And the service area, we've had to have that disposed of, signs, P S As, things like that that may relate to public safety, uh, in, in that world. So that's.
Any questions on the police?
Just, just a comment that's, these, sorry, Aaron.
Go ahead.
After you. Oh, I was going to say C P I use is actually more or less level. In fact, it may have gone down slightly since in the first half. So it'll probably be low in the second half.
That'd be good. We can't, if it goes negative, unfortunately we don't get a discount.
Yeah, we get, we get a floor of zero, but.
Yes.
It's probably going to be close to that.
Which is always good.
Okay. How long is our, sorry, how long is our police contract good for?
We're in the first year, we're in the first, uh, um, year of five. And we do have a option for two years of extensions, um, there. So, probably within the second year I'll start to, uh, you know, have some discussion points about what you want to start to think about, or at least the board, whoever the board is at that time wants to think about, uh, in three years. Because, you know, I think, as Mike would say, we did get some warning shots from Whittier on the last round of negotiations that they were open to do this, uh, one more time, but I don't know how favorable they'll be able to go for a, a third time. So we need to think about that.
And just to be clear, Kyle, we have a three-year contract with two one-year extensions, correct?
Three-year contract, excuse me, three-year contract with two one-year extensions. Sorry, I said five, the total of five if we wanted to play it out. So probably within the next year, we're going to definitely start to really discuss it.
And after three years, you know, we could extend for another year, but we do have to agree, correct?
They would have to agree and there might be some price negotiation within that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thanks.
Yep. Okay. Uh, the next one is, um, our streets contractor or road budget. So, uh, once again, this is flat. And the only thing that increases is our, uh, the op, the non-labor is fat, flat, but the personnel costs for Margaret and I increase. And these are, um, my estimations off of the increase from 19 to 20, um, and what it looks like. So, uh, salary wise, um, uh, we usually have an annual increase of living of 5%. And that's between, Margaret's a union employee and so she has, um, uh, annual living costs, which is usually larger than mine. I'm an executive employee, so I'm at the will of the mayor and the mayor decides as to what he does for in cost, in, increase for us. And so he's only done about a 1% to 1 and a half percent each year since he's been in office. So that gives you an idea of where we're at there. Um, and then there's just the, uh, increases down below. So it's a mixture of both of our salaries that represents this number here. And, uh, the mixture of, uh, an executive employee and a union employee and the union employee has negotiated rights. So, so they go up. One thing.
Can I ask a question on the math there for Medicare, uh, FICO Medicare? I see it's gone up by 50%.
Yes. So that's something that actually I didn't really catch on to till this year and, and I need to ask why that was. And, uh, and look into that because it, it could have been a mistake in the past. Cause usually one person costs about that much of the 28,000. So, um, so they might've caught up and found that they weren't, we weren't paying medical costs for both of us. So I'll.
I'm in the line, I'm at the line below.
Oh, and the taxes?
Yeah. So I, the taxes have gone up by 50% between 2020 and 2021. That looks like a mistake.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that one too. I don't know, uh, why that was. So.
It looks like it's a, it should be a 5% and it was a 50%.
Yeah, yeah.
On the.
It's probably, it should be 12 and a, it's probably going to be some of that 12 and a half thousand, not, um, 18,000.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it. I wrote the wrong number in.
Well, the only comment I have is.
Oh, so here's something that, and this is what I just, we didn't realize is, uh, Margaret was on Ethan's insurance and then started insurance with us in 2020. So that's why the insurance cost went up. We didn't pay that expense before.
All right, hon. Well, you're both well worth it. If we can do anything to get you more, tell us what we can do.
And so, moving down into the non-labor, um, uh, one thing to keep in mind this year is that we are going into, uh, we're going to probably next month, put the contract out for bid, uh, for the roads. We finished that in, um, the end of October. I do not want to be bidding anywhere near October. I want to make sure that I'm confident the contractor, who's going to be the new contractor, has the equipment ready and is good to go. Cause, um, we know that winter can come in really quick and, and that was a big problem last time we negotiated. Or last time we put it out, the bid is we had a contractor who wasn't equipped and probably, uh, wasn't, in the end, wasn't suitable for the, uh, contract. And, um, so I'm trying to push it earlier. So I'm right now, I'm working through all the specs and trying to get it ready and then get it to, um, uh, my bosses up at the municipality to get that on. So, um, so right now I have it flat. We've had it 600,000 for 10 years as to our contractual services for roads. And it can stay there, uh, but it does limit us, uh, in what we can accomplish and what we can do. And so, I mean, going forward, I think it's either we increase the contractual services or we increase the contribution that we're making to our, our capital account for, um, for road maintenance. Cause you know, we have projects that are starting to pile up and, uh, and I think that's a, that's a key thing that we want to keep aware of as to what, what we're going to do, um, down the road as our, as our infrastructure ages there. So.
How does it work for that contract going out to, is it, it doesn't go out to bid? Like we set the amount and then we, we say that it's 600,000 or how does that work?
So the way it works is that we put out a equipment spec and the equipment spec has a bunch of requirements. And then they bid how much it will cost hourly to use those equipment. And, uh, and there were, and what we put in the contract is that the contract will not exceed $600,000. And so that, that is an enticement to the contractor to realize that there is a possibility that they could make $600,000 with this equipment over a year, uh, by doing work. Typically, uh, in, in, in the last five years with the current contractor, and this is just because the contractor, he has, had management issues, um, they're not getting near the full amount. They're usually spending, we're usually spending about four to 50 to 500,000 with them annually and, and, uh, we may be using the rest for other funding. Sometimes we're up in the 550 range, but we never get close to the six. Uh, and that's mostly because I hold them back because I'm afraid we need, uh, we need reserve funding for snow removal in the fall and things like that. So. So it, it basically the contractor will bid, they will put down their price as to what that equipment costs. And then we total them all up and who's ever got the lowest bid is, is the winning bidder. If they pass inspection, we'll do inspection of their, I do inspection of their equipment to make sure they meet the specs that require. We have age limits on the equipment, things like that. And, and we, we go through and, and walk around the equipment, check it out, qualify it.
I have a question on the numbers. The, um, the electric, uh, cost stays the same. Aren't we adding electric to the, um, to the site down there?
Oh, I haven't changed that because at this point we haven't made a decision if we're going to add that.
Okay. But, but it would change. We would expect that number to go up for a, for a month.
Well, we do have electric there now. Um, we have.
Oh, okay.
We have a temporary post down there that's over in the side yard. And so, uh, they are plugging in, they are using it. It may go up because we may put some lights in, but we'll, we're definitely going to try to go with L E D and the most efficient lighting system.
Got it. So we're not expecting to use much more and have a higher, uh, utility cost. Then it's just the permanence of the installation.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, got it. Thanks.
The one thing that I did increase a little bit this year was street light maintenance. We're, we're constantly watching street light. Because now we have a lot more street lights with these improvements we've done. And, uh, most of the time what we're paying there is when people run into street poles, light poles, and we have to repair them, put them back up. So I'm always watching that because I feel like, as I hear from the street light people in town, they're like, you guys only have 12,000 for that budget. I'm going to hire someone. So we make it work.
But we're saving on the Glacier City Gazette. So that's, that balances.
Yes. No advertising. So that's, that's roads. You know, down below is just I G Cs. I do have revenues in here for the community room and I kept them at 6,000 being optimistic, but we'll probably reduce those as we go forward.
What was, um, was it in the Parks and Rec budget that you reduced the revenues?
I did.
That was for like camping and things like that or?
And then our, our rentals out at, uh, at the, uh, in the park. So we'll have permits and pavilion rentals and all these other things that we, we generate revenue in the summer.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's likely this will go down too.
This most likely will go down. Right now we're not rent, we, we will not consider rentals in here until we understand what the library is doing for, for public access. And, uh, as of right now, they're, they're only doing by appointment and it's been very limited.
So Kyle, a couple of questions. First one is, we are always going to do a performance review. Speaking of your hourly rate and everything, we should try to get that done sometime, right?
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate to hear from the board, um, and, you know, get feedback on, on my performance and, and how I'm doing and, and things like that. You're the only real, uh, gauge I get, uh, related to it. So it's been several years. So at some point, um, I would like to do it. I, I push it to the fall at this point. Uh, we have enough meetings on the agenda, but at some point this fall I'd like to, uh, take care of that.
Well, just as a, for how you're doing right now, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
So thanks. Uh, you want to talk about the road project?
So, uh, one thing that we're working through, um, and I still need to have a meeting on this, but, uh, I'm getting very concerned about the repave project on Alberg, uh, and, and the time to get it out to bid and then get it actually done before the rainy season starts. We've done some repave in the past where we've, we've. We've done some repave in the past where we've, we've grinded and all of a sudden it turns into a rainstorm. And then we try to pave over that, and then the product hasn't turned out well. And so just knowing how the muni works and how the purchase department works, I'm concerned that it may be irresponsible to try to push this project through and complete it this year. So one of two things I'm going to do in the two next two days is going to meet with the project designer and Todd Jacobson from Boote Company, who are helping us with this and discuss my concerns with them. And then two, look into the extension on the grant. Now that we have expended money to get the design done, it does show that we're moving forward on it. And then push that to get it done next May and, and bid it out. The other aspect I'm concerned about is that a lot of the contractors are staying fairly busy this summer, from what I've been hearing. And maybe putting something like this on the street right now may not catch as much attention and competitive bidding as it would if we pushed it and, and did it over the winter.
So I'm sorry, I missed the very beginning of that, or I wasn't paying full attention. So when you, when you, are you talking about the repave project?
Yes, so.
So do we have, we have a mechanism of doing that without redesigning every junction?
Yeah, so one thing that we are working on, and that's the other thing, that's why I want to meet with them, is we did a redesign to re, do the repay project from Moose Meadows to the end of Alberg and use those funds. And then, and, and so, yes, that's, that's what we're doing to avoid all the swoops that are being required by the new requirements under, under the design team there at, at the public and engineering.
Okay, so we're, we're just looking at a portion of it?
Yes. I'm not, I'm not excited about that, but at the same time, it still accomplishes taking care of some of the more rougher sections and, and getting that done. So, and then coming back later and, and determining what we can do to, you know, work with the other section.
So after we change, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, after we change chapter nine, so swoops are not a requirement.
Yes.
In Goodwood.
Yep.
That's not really a joke. That's semi-serious.
Yep. Yep.
How far, how far along is the design? Do we have drawings?
We do have drawings, and I think I shared it at one meeting, but I can share them again. We have drawings of the whole segment completed. And at this point, it'd just be, you know, shrinking those drawings. And I did ask them to add in one section just past the hotel approach area where the parking comes out. So they were adding that in, in that aspect, so.
Okay.
Any other questions around the roads budget? Well, what else, Kyle?
I have one other question. I guess it's on the, it's more like Parks and Rec, but did we ever get reimbursed for that, the pedestrian flasher?
So one thing about that is that we're still waiting on the contractor to come out and finish the last micro, the last software update. And they've been non-responsive on it. We're still holding their last third of payment for all the work that they did. So we've only paid them for two-thirds of the project. So now it's just becoming a tug-of-war to get them responsive on it. And, and so, yep, that's, that's where we're at. And so there's a political dance with that and how that works and, and everything along those lines. So I, I'm trying to push that as hard as I can. The other thing I did prepare last week was, out of that agreement, we can seek reimbursement also for the, the signs that we put on the pedestrian path out there and the, and the striping that we did on the ground. So I prepared that, and I think we'll send that over. I think it's going to be a bit of a struggle trying to get DOT just to, to move on it. It's not a lack because they don't, they, they don't have the money, it's just a lack of them, you know, having the time to carve it out. So I'm just getting all my ducks in a row. It'd be nice if I could send the whole package, and that's why the other aspect that I'm talking about with Todd tomorrow is to say, what can we do to get this contractor just to finish this thing and be done?
Which contractor is it? Is it the electrical contractor or Hickle?
Hickle is the general, and then the sub is MPC.
And is it, is the software upgrade for MPC?
MPC is responsible for the software upgrade.
Got it. So they're the ones that are not doing that.
Yes, and they've been non-responsive, and there's one individual who's in charge. So, so we will.
And Hickle's not getting their money, right?
Hickle's not getting their portion, and MPC's not getting their portion. So they've done this work, but they can't file a final invoice until they do these last steps. So they have man-hours that aren't being paid for.
I was going to. Oh.
I'm sorry, please be honest.
Last month, I was going to say that the stenciling on the bike path looked really great.
Yeah, it turned out good.
It does, does look good. I was going to ask, have you had any feedback at all on the, the signs or the stenciling? Because there was so much noise about the, about the, you know, cars traveling up and down and the lack of marking. And now we've done it all, everyone, I haven't heard any comments on it at all.
Besides you guys, I haven't heard a person say a word about it.
Exactly. There's so much complaint and so little. Thanks.
There was no, there's, that's classic, you know, sort of my life of the job in the sense that people love to complain, but they never want to like say, oh, thanks for doing that, you know? Or hey, it's working, you know? I mean, for the whole part, you know, I don't, I haven't seen many cars on the bike path, but we are also missing the people who are most likely to be on the bike path, which are the tourists. So, but I think it's been working, you know?
Yeah, I think the fact you have to hit a bollard to do it is probably a, a big warning. I did actually, I take it back. I did get a thank you from the Martins. They said, thank you.
Oh.
Which I meant to pass on, and I'll pass on now.
Yep, good. Yep, they would be the people I would expect it from.
Yep.
And were we going to do other changes to the swoops?
Well, one project I do, I do have on there, and it's, it's, I just haven't tackled it because it's pretty time-consuming, is the re-grind and repaint stop bars and the swoop lines in there and deal with that. And that's something I want to talk more further with Scott Thomas about and, and get it figured out. It's, it requires quite a bit of contractors, and it may require a bidding process. So I actually put it on the back burner. I just wanted to see if, how things have been going and, and see how these new improvements have, have helped and, and then examine that. You know, one thing about it is I have to see what our expenses are between what we've done here and then what we're going to get reimbursed on for the flashing lights. And then, because we may dry that, that reimbursement up because it's just to a certain amount. And then, and then just make a determination how far I want to get into that and, and then go.
I still think that would be an improvement, though.
Yeah.
Re, re, and I think the community would like it to have the lines redone and the stop bars redone.
It was very much too particular. There were two real issues going on. One was driving on the, one was driving along the bike path, and I think we've solved that. And the second one was the closeness and the lack of a shoulder between the roadway and the bike path. And that's the thing we still have to solve, which is the re-grinding problem.
Well, and I will, I will keep the push on that. I'll be honest, my bandwidth right now is very limited between all the projects we have going on. So I may not get to it in twenty twenty, but we will try to push for it in twenty twenty-one.
Sounds good. Speaking of another project, if you're going to talk to Scott, ask him about lowering the speed limit on Crow Creek Road.
Yeah, I will follow, you know, he did give us an email within the last month, so I will, I would gently push on it, but I don't want to test for him too hard. I'll give him another fifteen days.
Okay, thanks.
After that, the other project, the other suggestion that's come up, which we're not going to push on yet, but we'll discuss in the future, is moving the thirty, the thirty speed limit back a corner. And I've had discussions with him, his big, the problem is where it is now. If people start slowing down when you hit the thirty, they're down to about thirty by the time they hit the bridge.
Yeah.
So one suggestion is move it back another corner. So it's basically thirty mile limit is, is roughly a slack tide.
Yes.
And then by people, by the time people actually respond to that, they're doing thirty by the time they get to Crow Creek Junction.
Yes. Yep.
But he was fairly, when we, when the last time I discussed that with him, he was fairly receptive to the idea, at least in concept. It would need a study, et cetera.
Yes. Okay.
Do we still have the cemetery budget to cover?
Oh, well, we have that on there, but there's no cemetery budget, so we'll probably.
Zero.
Zero. And, and I did get word that there was some push going on in Eagle River to examine the options for a cemetery there. So I know Tommy's been more involved with that, but I know Robin and, and I think John Rada in retirement was kind of helping to maybe steer some of the people up there to help get that figured out. So I don't know where that is, but I did get a phone call from Jacques Bouteille, and he was asking who our consultant was on the cemetery design, which was Jack Gano. And he was going to give Jack a call to get proposal to put something together for Eagle River.
That'd be great if both were doing it, both are being done at the same time.
Correct, yep. If that's, it's an advantage that Jabil had, I think that's a good thing to follow through on, so.
Yeah, he can stay at the Eagle River Cemetery as Eagle River Nature Center and just commute over the pass.
I had a question about our municipal meeting. I assume that's via Zoom, but for some reason I had that it was downtown in my phone.
No, it will be, it's actually, we're going to be doing it via, what's that, Microsoft?
Teams.
Teams. We're going to be doing it via Teams, which is going to be an experiment because we may be switching over to Teams for the rest of our meetings. Just because of some pushback I've gotten from IT about us using Zoom. So, so we are going to run that and, and try that meeting and just, I gotta learn how to work it just to make sure I got it right.
The, if you want wide public participation, Zoom is a much better choice, so I would push back on the IT department as well.
So I, but I haven't, I can't say I haven't used Teams to run a meeting yet, so I need to do one meeting with Teams, so.
Right. We'll make sure it goes badly.
I'll, I'll make sure it cuts out after the fire department discussion. Just kidding. I do like Mike's roaming background, though, like you're very good.
Oh, this is, this is just I moved to a different location. I've had three different backgrounds. But actually, my favorite, my favorite example for Zoom was somebody who recorded the empty room they're in. And then they, they opened the door, ran in, looked at surprise and ran out again. And they used that video as a background when they were on a, on a call. So they're talking in something, and suddenly the door opens and they walk in behind themselves and then surprised and run out. I'm not that adept.
I think that's all I got, unless you guys have any other questions.
No.
No, thanks, Kyle.
Yep.
Just, it's slightly off-topic of the budget, but we have, so in previous years, we've done the reassignment of role, roles as a special meeting. Actually, we've moved into executive session for it. I think this time we're going to plan to do this as part of our standard GBOS meeting.
Yeah.
It will just be interesting. That's not the way we've done it before.
Is that, are we making a change or?
Yes.
Change or what?
In the past, we've always done it as an executive session, in executive session within a special meeting of reassigning roles, so we can criticize each other. You know, in a very, in a very open and aggressive way, but it's never been like that. It's always been very collegial. So I think it kind of makes sense to do it in a normal meeting. It's just not the way we've normally done it. So I just want to make sure everyone is comfortable with that.
When you, when you say that, Mike, I, maybe we should do it after our meeting next Monday.
Or before.
Or before. What do you think of that idea?
We could do a thirty-minute spectral meeting just about the role change.
I mean, I'm kind of.
I mean, I don't strictly think we, we should be going into executive session for it because that, that's really a misuse of what executive session is for. Executive session would typically be if you're going to criticize somebody else, a third party. And then they have the option of, of actually, they have the option of choosing for that criticism to be public. That's not what we're doing, so we probably shouldn't be doing this in a executive session anyway. But there's nothing wrong with doing a special session. We could do it, we could just allocate half an hour beforehand and make it a six-thirty meeting.
I think that'd be good. That way we can just have a little more time to talk about it without feeling like we need to rush through to get on with the meeting.
I would agree with that.
I'd be happy with that as well.
Well, we will, we will send you a invite for a six-thirty meeting. And if you guys respond, then we know we have a meeting because you're in a work session right now, so you can.
No, we're just discussing it.
Yep. No, and I agree with you, Mike. I, I have my Todd Stewart hat on, and Todd would be saying you can't go to executive session.
No, I don't think we should.
Okay.
Unless we want to complain, unless we want to complain about somebody else, but that's not really a.
Once again, Todd would say no.
Um, yeah.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Be safe.